Everybody's ready. Monica is out of town and therefore not joining us. Emergency, I think, exit. Is out the back of the room and down the hall either direction to exits. Are there any agenda changes? Um, I wanted to just under other business, other business add, I got a response about that other paper article. We had talked about a couple of meetings late. I just have a little more information. I think that's a reasonable thing to follow up on under other business. And open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Um, as far as I know, we do not currently have any members of the public other than Sue, who may want to say something. Um, so I'm going to move on to announcements. Um, we have a few in our packet and then. Um, I attended along with Paul, the city council meeting on the seventh, which was Monday. Where they had their first reading of LDR twenty-two oh seven and oh eight, which is the. Auto commercial change that we sent to them and they. Oh, okay, good. I I couldn't see the audience. Who, who was the other one? Perfect, wonderful. Well, hopefully I didn't say anything out of line. I did watch the video, but I know I wasn't present. At the discussion, so hopefully I represented it correctly. Um, they have set a hearing for December fifth at nine P M. For their public hearing part, so that was my only announcement. Anyone else have any?
Very pleased that the council passed the new construction ordinance. Or um, heating and hot water. I just think it's real credit to the town and the council that we. That we did that, um, just just really, really excited about it. Um, and folks should be aware that on the twenty-first, I think the last official action of the. Climate Action Task Force will be to um, request that the council begin the process of. Um, gaining some authority with respect to existing buildings. So excited to kick that process off as well.
Other announcements?
Yeah, just um, after our last meeting, um, I reached out to uh, Chris Rombley. From the Affordable Housing Committee and just had a, a meeting with him, um, and and I made clear that I was there on my own. I was just not as an official planning commission. Um, member, but just had a real good discussion with them, just felt like, you know, needed to reach out and talk to them, but um. I got some stuff I will bring back, um, probably talk to you Jessica at some point and see if it's something we want to put on our agenda or not. But yeah, I had a good conversation with them. It just felt like somebody needed to reach out to them after our last meeting.
Yeah, there is one thing. I I volunteered to. Serve on that subcommittee, um, looking for undeveloped or. Uh, places that can be really redeveloped for affordable housing and it was supposed to be on the agenda that. Following week, but it wasn't, so nothing has happened to my, to my volunteering for it. Oh, sorry, I didn't put that on, but.
Okay, um, Paul?
Um, I was just at a um, charter. Um, committee meeting this afternoon at four o'clock and um, our. The, the city council and the charter committee have both taken a recommendation about not expanding to nine. And so it's no longer an issue. It's gone from everywhere. Um, and um, I guess that's about it. Oh, there was one other thing too. Um, there is apparently a request for a charter change regarding. Uh, replacing fossil fuels with uh, electricity, right, in all construction. Not just new construction, correct?
Well, that, that's what I was alluding to on the twenty-first. Um, the climate action task force, as its last really official act, will be asking the council to. Ask the, well, we'll ask the council and hope uh, that the council will then ask the charter committee to begin that process, yes.
Can I make a clarification there, Andrew? So uh, ju- one, just ten seconds background. The proposal that the Climate Action Plan Task Force put forward is to mirror what Burlington passed. And then the legislature and the governor passed last year, which is giving the municipality the authority to. Regulate heating in existing buildings by a method to be then. Later voted upon again by the voters. So that's the authority. Um, I think that if. So the language as proposed by the Climate Action Plan Task Force already exists. It's mirroring exactly what Burlington has done. If the council chooses to. Uh, advance it for this year's town meeting day, it would likely. Be an action directly of council rather than referring it to the charter committee. That would be their choice, but from a timing perspective. And given that the language is already known, it's really a. Normally, the reason that something would go to the charter committee is to debate the, is to debate the subject. Yes, I won't send it out for another week, so.
So what Paul said. Um, it is, that, that was the nature of the discussion and um. If uh, the council decides to send it to the charity committee and it's not necessary for them to send it to the charter committee. Um, it will uh, screw up your timeline and you probably won't be able to have it on the ballot for March. So I would, I personally would watch that and make sure that the council doesn't do that, doesn't refer to the charter committee.
Yeah, I think that from a timing perspective and this can, um, I can follow up with, with you, Andrew and Ethan some more, but. There's some very specific statutory requirements for notice of charter changes. That essentially backs the council up to the first notice needs to go out in mid to late December. Um, otherwise it can't be on the ballot for March.
Yeah, and if it goes to the charter committee, we only meet once a month and uh, you know, the likelihood of you being able to meet that timeline would probably be impossible.
Okay, any other announcements or anything else from staff?
A couple of quick ones from me, um, as Andrew alluded to the, or said. The council passed the ordinance regulating heating in new buildings that will take effect for heating. Uh, for any permits received by the fire department or for zoning permits as of February fifteenth. And two years later for hot water in. Um, multifamily and commercial buildings, so that's that piece. Oh, also going to be on the twenty-first November. This isn't directly in your work, but it certainly is connected to it. Uh, the school district is going to be uh, having a, a further discussion with the council. About the possibility of a school impact fee that would be for um, what they're calling ZEM. Zero Energy Modules at two schools um, to uh, increase capacity. For the next eight to ten years. Um, the price tag uh, that the school district has looked at. Is uh, just shy of six million dollars for this. Um, so it's a big project. Uh, the fees, the impact fees would be eligible to be charged for. About ninety percent of the cost, um, a certain portion of it of the cost. Is to meet a current existing shortfall of space, but for the majority of it would be for. Uh, anticipated need over the next eight years and the um, there would be a proposed. Ramp fee, but up to the low five digits, so ten thousand dollars plus per. Unit for larger dwelling units. Um, so it's not a small thing being asked. Um, but that's going to be presented to the council on the twenty-first as well for the possibility of the council warning public hearing. Uh, like uh, um, three plus bedroom dwelling units. Um, with the consultant having done some work to identify. What is the average number of kids per one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom? So it's a. The, the proposal being shared to council would be sort of a ramped fee based on, is it a one bedroom? Unit is a two bedroom, three or four plus. So, yeah, not a uh, not an insignificant number and also a strong need as presented by the schools, so.
So I guess this is a consequence of not having passed the bond to build a new school.
I will leave that to other people who are involved in, in school planning to be able to draw those lines more directly, but.
No, I think it actually has more to do with the fact that the elementary schools, no, we, we looked at consolidating and building a new elementary school. And that was shot down. This, this has more to do with the elementary.
So this would be for Central School and Orchard.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, not, that doesn't really have to do with high school, no, no.
And very importantly, most important announcement, Sue Alannick, uh, our minutaker was on the ballot. Uh, this past week for justice of the peace in Burlington and of the. It seems like dozens of people who were on the ballot, she was the top vote getter. For justice of the peace in Burlington, so congratulations, Sue.
There were, there were thirty on the ballot. I actually counted.
Thank you.
He could have become governor of California, Sue. That many people running.
It might have been easier than the day I had yesterday, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I think we can move on to item five, the A R P A Funding Recommendations to Council. This, I'm sorry, I missed this great sounding conversation. Um. So this is just to see if the kind of. Drafted summary of the discussion meets the expectations of the commission.
Is that draft in here somewhere?
It is. It's page uh, five, I don't know. Six, maybe? This one, this is.
And just as a little bit of background, this was in the packet, my explanation. Um, I was trying to balance between, there was. Expression amongst the commission that wanting to send a fairly unified recommendation. But also reflecting some of the variation in what commissioners were suggesting to the city council, so I was trying to walk that line. So it is intentionally concise, it is intentionally omitting details of what certain people may have said. In an effort to make it more of a unified statement.
Is your mask mandatory?
My mask is because I have a five-month-old unvaccinated infant.
Yes, yes.
It's mandatory.
Very much so.
Uh, okay, yep.
So, I mean, it's, it's reads quite nicely, but I did, um, you know, I wasn't here, so if people. People feeling like it's reasonable as written?
It's what we agreed, I think.
Okay, um, do you, would you like a vote of some kind? Is this something we should vote on?
Sure, it's probably not strictly necessary, but it would be nice to have on the record that this represents the recommendation of the planning commission to city council.
So the, the motion would be to approve the first, second and third. Uh, planning commission suggestions for the use of the, how much is it? Of the, the ARPA funding. Um, available. To the planning commission. If that's what it is.
Okay, any more discussion? Anything from the public? Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous, um, by everyone in attendance, so great, great discussion there. Um, and at the previous meeting when it was all put together, so six. This is the municipal planning grant application from the Department of Housing and Community Development.
So again, just a brief statement, it's reiterating what I wrote in the agenda memo. Um, but the Vermont Department of Housing and Community Development operates a competitive grant um, program each year. Maximum for an individual, individual municipality is around twenty-six thousand dollars, um. Awarded in January, you get about a year and a half, almost two years to spend um, the money. They provide a list of their statewide priorities and make it very clear that the closer that. A proposed project aligns with those priorities, the more likely you are to get funded. Um, so staff actually recommends that the city pursue a grant to develop an equity framework for planning processes. Um, over the last year or so, probably longer, but that's as long as I've been here. Um, it's been, become clear that the planning processes in the city could be designed to do a more automatic, efficient and effective job of reaching the city's equity goals. Um, in public outreach, in how we interact with the public and in, in the planning department. So that's what we would suggest that we pursue as a grant application. Um, but we are open to some other. Other thoughts. We, I listed a few other things that we considered. Um, we believe that the, the equity. Working with an outside consultant who is a professional in this field, um, twenty-six thousand dollars will get us started and get us. Um, some more tools in our toolkit for doing a better and more deliberate job of. Um, equity and engaging equitably with the public in our planning processes.
You did find what you mean by equity planning. I, I don't understand that term.
So pla- planning being planning and zoning and then being more equitable in how we engage in our planning processes. How we do public outreach, how we um, engage with the public when they come into our office for, with questions. Or with, you know, zoning permit applications, things like that. It's. It's become clear that we, I feel personally, I guess, that we flounder a little bit when we say. We want, we want to engage and, and reach more underrepresented people in our planning processes for the city. Um, and we're not, we're not really sure how to do that in an efficient way. And bringing in a consultant who would give us some more direction and give us some more tools for how to do these processes. In a more equitable way that reach some of our underrepresented populations, um, would be the goal of this grant program.
When the uh, state did the state climate action plan, uh, they sort of took, took a stab at identifying some of these issues. And, and they came up with a list at their level of what does underrepresented mean? And it was a really eye-opening list that it's, it is, it includes um, lower income families. It includes, there's one minorities, but it might include in, in, in other circumstances, people who live in multifamily housing. Renters, younger people, just people who are not typically participants, eh, unless you really sort of build the networks out to do it. And um, you know, a, a, as of, for instance. Um, the population that comes and goes from our community library is a very different one. From what I, what we typically see in our office. Um, and who, who comes up to participate. It's, they're both South Burlington residents, but there's a whole swath of people that we just don't see. On the planning side, it's how do we do outreach? On the zoning side, it's how do we communicate? Uh, and how do we help people through things that are very technical, um, in a manner that is. Um, helpful to people who might not be first language English speakers or uh, you know, it's, what are the barriers essentially? To our, to, to interfacing with our department.
And, and the effort with this grant money would be to start developing the tool so that we're not reinventing the wheel every time we're trying to do outreach. Or we need it, we're doing another planning process instead of kind of ad hoc doing it as we think of it every time, like having a real structure. So that we're making sure that we're doing the most that we can every time we go to public outreach.
Thank you.
Any questions? Is that Paul?
Can this be used uh, as part of our community outreach effort for the comprehensive plan?
Um, the timing is a little bit late um, for that. Um, we would get, you would get the, the grant would actually start funding in February. Um, so it is possible, but what, the intention is more that we would be hiring a consultant to. Help us develop the framework so that moving forward, we are doing everything. In a consistent manner and in a, in an efficient way that we can make better decisions and do better outreach for the future. Because for the comprehensive plan, public outreach will likely be wrapping up by August or so. When we really have to have some drafts, draft work that's going to commission and then going to city council, so it's a little bit, um. This grant money would be a little bit late to be effective on the comprehensive plan.
And I guess what I would add to that, Paul, is um, my hope would be, yes, we can use some of it. But I don't think we want to promise that in the grant application for those reasons. I mean, I think we may be able to learn. And, and apply right of way, but if we say it's for the comp plan, for the purpose of the grant, I think that could be challenging. Because they may say, well, you know, did you, did you apply it for the comprehensive plan fully? I think we may still be able to pick their brain and make use of it.
I don't know that we need to, but you know, I just thought I'd ask.
But it, but I like the idea of that, you know, when we're, when we're actually like creating the scope of work for the consultant to be able to say. Can we have an interim step where we talk about some ideas that we might be able to apply in the shorter term, you know, to the comp plan? Cause we'll be near the end.
I, I, so I'm in favor of this. I, I would just ask maybe just consistent with the conversation to. Define it a little more, maybe instead of saying equity, you know, um, pursuit of um. Playing process to help reach out to folks that are under, underrepresented and that don't participate as much, you know, something just. Cause in, in my mind too, I mean, I broadly understand what equity means, but it's, has a term that people give different meanings to, I think. And so be good to be a little clearer, I think.
Anyone else?
Motion? Um, move to recommend the city council approval, submission of a municipal plan grant application for tools for greater equity in planning.
Um, I'll second, yeah, and any, any discussion or additional questions? Um, I guess I would ask, I'd like um, Andrew's idea, so maybe as it gets drafted up, that could just be kind of part of that discussion. For the description. Um, okay, anything from the public? Okay, on favor? That was Ted, were you, okay, yep, unanimous, thank you. Uh, okay, so street names, one of my favorites. I was wondering if we could see a map of the area before we.
Yes, we can do that. Just give me thirty seconds here.
While Paul is doing that, I just wanted to share a tiny bit of background. It's my understanding from the uh, developer that Douglas Lane and Wilson Lane were both. Um, chosen from names of Vermont governors. Um, Wilson is Stan, like Jim, Jim Douglas, Douglas. Um, and then Wilson Lane is Stanley C. Wilson, Vermont's governor from nineteen thirty-one to nineteen thirty-five. During much of the recovery from the nineteen twenty-seven flood and the Great Depression and who was also the governor when Vermont adopted the state income tax. So.
No, but the nineteen twenty-seven flood was crazy.
Right, he was the governor of Vermont recovering from the Great Depression and the nineteen twenty-seven flood, so it was a pretty significant situation.
I promise we'll only have the income tax for the two years necessary to recover from this flood and.
Um, it seems a little, I, I was looking at the other street names around the area. I'm not opposed to these names, but it seems like a real mix. Like there's some presidents, like Jefferson and Madison, and then there's some. More quaint seeming name, like this is the Farmway, I don't know. I'm not opposed at all, but there's definitely no existing.
The developer had originally requested two names that both had the word farm in them, so. We at least moved away from two farm some things.
That because it was a farm or because there is a farm there?
I'm not sure.
Uh, the latter.
There's, there's common roots, right?
Right, it's because there is a farm there.
Yeah, yeah.
If you need a motion, I would, I would move that we uh, accept Farmway as the, the new name of the street.
They're asking for three, right?
It's for three streets. Yeah, it's for, it's sorry, it's for three, it's for three different streets.
Well, I guess I'm not enamored with. Having in my past life been a Republican, but have two, two Republican names as streets, but that's. So it becomes controversial eventually.
They weren't, no, they weren't, no.
No, this is actually something that I, this is what I do with my day. This is something I considered, but I. Just my opinion personally, not as the whole department, is that Douglas and Wilson are both generic enough names. That you could come up with a thousand people that either one could be named after. And if I hadn't told you who it was named after, you might not have guessed.
This is a request from S D Island?
Um.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I move that uh, we accept the names Douglas Lane, Farmway and Wilson Lane. For the streets, South Village Streets east of Common Roots Farm.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a map. And Paul has a question.
Well, I always say on these occasions that I really would like to have a name, a, a street named after me someday.
After you, yeah, well, you have to wait. I know, that's true. Just dead to me.
He, he's out of sight, out of mind, maybe.
So.
Do we have a second to the?
We did have a second.
Staff, when the uh, the developers come to you and ask for names, then Engels is the one.
I will keep that in mind.
Thank you.
You've almost got a stream in Burlington named after you. It's, it's, it's almost your name.
Oh, yeah, with what? Angle? Angle speed, yeah, that's the Brook, right?
Right.
Yeah, I can't do credit for the Brook, I'm sorry.
Uh, so just for, for reference, uh, Farmway is this, uh, if you can see my mouse going up and down. That is in fact the way that one gets to the farm at South Village. Uh, I believe this one is Douglas Lane, so that would, it's, it's the rear alley between the two sets of homes. And then uh, Wilson is a little dead-end street that goes from here to here off Preserve Road.
Apparently as a company, isn't it? Isn't firmly a corporation.
Does it connect with Preserve Road?
It does, so it becomes a dirt road after this point for farm use only and emergency vehicles. So it's not really shown on there because it's, it's really just for the farm after that point.
Okay, um, any additional discussion or questions, Andrew?
Just, I, I, I wouldn't mind seeing if we have a sense of the surrounding names, cause this, it is an opportunity to um. Do some equity here perhaps with at least one of the names, right? Um, and ma- maybe that's already sufficiently covered in the surrounding names and so we're good, but, but maybe not.
What was the other one you said they suggested? Was there, you said another farm one? Were there other names?
I believe it was Farms Edge Lane or some, it was Farms Edge something.
And from a nine-one-one perspective, you can't have two streets right next to each other with the word.
Another governor, I think, on their Aiken.
I think most of these are named for substantial political. Uh, names, I think was the original concept there. Um, but if the commission is not um. Satisfied, you can choose of your own to change it, or you can ask the developer to go back to the drawing board and come up with one or more additional.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does lack imagination and it may not be appropriate, but Will Rapp. Has the guy who's done almost everything that needed to be done to get a farm and a solar facility in there. Um, and I don't think it's recognized, but uh, you know, he's the original. Owner of that land. Um, but he, and he's done a lot for us.
Would you say what?
Will Rapp.
Would you say though, at the end of what you were saying? What were you saying at the end of what you were saying?
That, that he uh, he, I don't, that he's done a lot around South Village. For getting the farm organized.
Yeah.
And for getting the solar um, facility organized. Um, but you know, that, that doesn't, it doesn't answer. Um, Andrew's suggestion that we should try and find some, something that is in line with our equity. Um, ambitions.
I wouldn't, I guess, I guess I'm just looking at the like, kind of diminutive nature of the little roads. And I kind of wouldn't want it named after Madeline Kuhn or, you know, you know, we don't have very many. You know, if we're talking about just a, a very different type of political person, um. Like I don't know if you'd want the little tiny dead-end road to be named after her, you know. You know, compared to some of these kind of more prominent streets, um, I don't, I don't know.
Like you've got Churchill's that little road, and there's certainly figures in the UK probably that you could. I don't know, I, I, my, I guess my perspective, we go back and ask them to try and think of one political figure that would um, represent and uh, underrepresent the population.
Yeah, or, or something that's more about the, something to do with the farm, like a harvest or, you know, something that's maybe, if they did have two farm names originally.
And I think in, maybe not to argue this one, but maybe in the future, I mean, my preference not to have a political figure, especially a living political figure as a named street. But.
They, they did offer Garden Way as, as one op, as one action, but we have a garden street. I'm just saying that they did offer a few other options. They also offered a Harvest uh, Lane or Way, but there is a Harvest. There are Harvest things in Williston, Shelburne, I think Colchester. Um, yeah, so there's too many for nine-one-one purposes.
These are quite small streets and roads. I don't think we should belabor it. I mean, yes, the applicant lacked imagination, but I'm inclined to let it go, approve it.
Okay. I might feel differently if it was like a big, big road, but it looks like there's only like two homes on the one.
Right, there's uh,
Or.
Eight on Wilson here, and then technically none on this one. This is for, really for fire department naming purposes, because the actual streets that these homes were on are Jefferson and Farmway. So this is, there wouldn't be no actual homes using this address. It's really just for fire department nine-one-one purposes. We're having an active debate with them about whether we even need, need to name things like.
Yeah, would they, is Lane appropriate, or would it be like an alley?
Lane is what we're using instead of village for alleys.
Okay. Um, okay, any, well, it sounds like there's some support for just the suggested language. Anyone feel very strongly about sending it back? Okay, um, then we can, and there, we do have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, unanimous. But, you know, I think that some of what we talked about is good um, kind of feedback for future naming. You know, I think in this case, they were pretty small roads, so.
So we have the uh, official rules of certain things that need to be done, like it can't be named after another street in South Burlington or elsewhere. And then we have what um, Marla in our office likes to call Paul's unofficial rules. Uh, and I can add, um, think of diversification in Paul's unofficial rules. One of them is no fake history. That's a Paul unofficial rule. So don't call it like old barn road if there was never a barn on that, on that street. So I can add this to Paul's unofficial rules for guidance.
Perfect. Okay, so next up, we can get back to our work on the comprehensive plan. So starting to think about our future land use, it seems like a nice place to jump back in. Um, Kelsey, I think you were, you had put together this
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yep, so just as a tiny bit of additional background, um, we are moving forward from the staff side at reaching out to committees and staff departments um, for some of the discussions of the, what they see of, uh, see as key topics and setting up some initial meetings. So that side with all of the different sections of the comprehensive plan that fall into the areas of expertise of um, committees and or departments is, is moving forward sort of in that direction. So the idea here was the future land use map itself and just future land use in South Burlington in general is core to the planning commission's contribution to the comprehensive plan. The whole document is, is under the ownership of the, of the planning commission, but the land use part of it specifically is really only in the purview of the com- of the commission and not, you know, under the Affordable Housing Committee or, or the Economic Development Committee or somebody else. So that's why we wanted to really jump in and jump in right to this map. The other important point um, is that this is a, is a real touchstone for the public and for applicants and for the commission moving forward. Um, this is the, a major image that people turn to to see like, what's the plan for this area of the city or that area of the city moving forward. Um, so getting this right and updating it in ways that make sense um, is really core to setting up the rest of the comprehensive plan, making, making cohesive sense. So it might feel like we're jumping right into the, into the meat of it, and, and we are, and that's, and that's the point of it. Um, but to that end, we really want the comprehensive plan and our future planning for South Burlington to be information and data driven. Not necess- not that it has been in the past, but you know, making sure that our decisions and how land use is planned for is, is backed up both by current information that we have and projections into the future. So what, the first question that we had about the future land use map is what information do you need as a commission to make those kinds of decisions? What is the data that you need to be able to consider and layer on top of itself, or different layers you can layer on top of each other to make decisions about where greater residential density should be, where commercial density should be, where lower density should be? I, and, and I included a few examples, so maps of where conserved lands are, sewer and water lines, transit lines, current parks and their accesses, the location of habitat blocks. And we, we can also compile additional information, but that was all in information about existing facilities. But then we can also compile some additional more, it's not necessarily population information, but where is considered built versus unbuilt in the city where um, housing has been built in the last ten years or more or less since the last comp plan. Um, and, and other things that I listed in, in this memo. So the, the big question is what, what information do you think is important and that do you feel you need to be able to look back at that sort of fuzzy heat map of development and decide if anything should be changed and what should be changed?
And I guess, I, I would just add two things. One is that um, you know, I think it might be like feel like a daunting task to put together one map, and we could say, why can't we just have ten maps to show all these different things? But this is actually a requirement by the state to have a future land use map, is that correct?
Yes.
So we do need to have one map that shows something, and I guess the other thing is that um, the plan before this just stuck in a zoning map, which doesn't represent either what's on the ground now or really a plan other than what's in the zoning. So I don't think we necessarily want to revert back to that. Um, and then the third point I think is that it doesn't necessarily have to look like this. This was just as, as best as we could get without, yeah, you know, at the time, but we've had a lot of thinking since then, so.
Yep, and that was sort of part of the second question as well, like which do flow into each other, but how do you want to use this map? What do you want it to convey? Do you want to show priority um, when it currently doesn't show priority? And how do you want to categorize uses? It can be different than it is currently, um, the way it's sort of re- li- it is listed by intensity of use, um, and some residential, commercial split. Um, but you could do that differently as well, so what, what does the planning commission want this future land use map to look like? And just the one, just one more quick piece of background. It's been, it's brought up every time a zoning request is, is come in, has come in, or some, or something in a discussion by the commission brings up a possible change in zoning, or what do we want to do fut- in the future for zoning purposes? And it's been repeated that we can't really do zoning changes that are not consistent with our comprehensive plan. So if you're thinking, we need, we want to be able to make X, Y, or Z zoning change in the future, it has to be based on data and based on the comprehensive plan. So it can't be inconsistent with whatever kind of map you end up putting um, into the comprehensive plan for future land use. So just to keep in, in your mind.
I had two questions. I think you answered the second one, what do we want to use it for? We want to use it for planning.
Yeah.
But uh, my first question was, can it be, does it have to be fuzzy? Or can it be more clearly delineated? Because I think the zoning that we've done in the last few years is kind of parcel based in many ways, like N R P, which is, would ca- fall under protected or conserved.
So, Michael, let me.
So, you know, the lands which are defined in, in one way or another in Article twelve should somehow be, um, we should be able to find those in, in this land use map, because that really does dictate how that land can be used. So that, that, those are a couple of questions that I, that I have in mind.
Sure, so let me take a crack at the answer to that. So the short answer, Michael, is no, there's no requirement that it be fuzzy. In fact, we are the outlier. Most communities do not use a fuzzy map. Um, and regulators don't love that we use a fuzzy map. The Regional Planning Commission doesn't love that we use a fuzzy map. Um, so no, there's no requirement to do so. I, at least in the twenty sixteen plan, I advocated for a fuzzy map, because I think there is a difference between a future land use map about what is your vision for the future versus a regulatory map, and they get mixed up a lot um, from the general public as to what, which one is which. And so that was my advocacy at the time to suggest this would be a way of showing that things are not set in stone, they are a vision of the future. And it leaves a little bit of room for discussions like the discussion that you just had a couple of months ago of should Allen Road and Swiss Street be allowing for a lot more density through T D Rs or just a minimal amount? Because if you draw a really hard line and say, this is medium density, this is high density, this is low density, it doesn't necessarily let you um, per, per Kelsey's point, you know, somebody will come to us and say, well, you drew the line of this street, so that's as far as you go. But like I said, we are the outlier. Most communities draw lines.
But can't you have a range, for example, you mentioned Swift Street, can't you have a range of densities that would be allowed?
Absolutely.
And then it's up to whoever owns the land or develops the land to decide what density they want to go. They might want to go low, medium, or high. If it's appropriate for that corridor, if you like. We used it as a hypothetical um, Swift Street on which I happen to live and uh, just for fun.
Ted?
I am, as a critic of, of the fuzzy map, but, I'm sorry. I was critical of the fuzzy map because it was fuzzy. But I like the idea that it gives you a, you know, a vision from a very high distance, so the broad picture. But we really need to have subsequent maps that dig down into, well, what does that really mean? You know, we're supposed to have sort of swaths of land supposedly for wildlife, and those swaths of land are sort of becoming a little more and more narrow, and in some, you know, down by Chit and Cider Mill, it's pretty much blocked now.
But would those other maps have the same statutory force as this map?
Well, I don't know about statutory, but certainly for our planning, it would be nice for us to figure out what the, what is here now, what's still really available for development. Um, and, you know, is that the right zoning? But I think, you know, several steps. I don't think we can do great planning from this fuzzy map, frankly.
So, Ted, just to kind of follow up to like, um, Kelsey's very specific question, you know, she has maybe, it looks like nine bullet points here of I think what you're talking about, like that backup data, those other maps that can help us maybe adjust this one. Do these, do these ones kind of seem like the right types of map and, and maps and information that would help us get there in your opinion, or anyone?
Does the fuzzy map?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's, that's map one. And then map two starts to get down to what, what is going on, you know, at that particular location? Is, it's green and yellow, but how much is yellow? And I think that's where we run into some problems with some citizens is, you know, they look at this and sort of think that they should be able to develop, and it's really in the green, so.
So I guess my, just one quickly, I would add Ted, that if the commission is ultimately comfortable that you feel good about where the lines are in the, in the future land use map, then by all means, please, you know, I, I don't have a problem with them being clear lines. I think when we go back to twenty sixteen, no judgment on, in, in the past, but I, I think, you know, the, the habitat blocks that were adopted this year don't necessarily jump off the page in here. And so in a future version, if you were to say, oh, you know, we've done the study based on the interim zoning, we'd like to do habitat blocks, if the lines were more clear, they would need to be in those areas. You know, you gave the example of development, I'll give the example of conservation. But if the commission says, you know, we've done all the mapping, you know, from Kelsey's list, we've done conserved lands, we feel good that we've captured all the natural resources that are priorities for the city for the next decade, and you're ready to have a more clear line. It doesn't mean down to the foot or the inch or a hundred yards or anything like that. It's not, it's not, it's never going to be that specific, then please do, please go for it. I don't think the commission in twenty sixteen was quite ready to lock in.
Um, so Andrew and then Duncan? And then back to me.
So, um, yeah, I, I like the way this map is set up. I like, I, I think the fuzziness makes sense for the reasons Paul said. What would help me figure out whether um, the pattern reflected in the map is, remains appropriate, um, would be um, most of the things, Kelsey, that you have on your list to kind of overlay um, the, the current land use map with. But in addition, um, what struck me as honestly contributing the most to some of the ve- some, some of the more difficult issues that um, came up during I Z was the inconsistency between some of the maps in the existing comp plan in particular, um, map seven and eight. Um, and map eleven. So maps seven and eight in existing comp plan um, are used in the existing comp plan in, in, in really precise ways, right? The comp plan says with map seven, those areas are off limits to development. And for map eight, it says limited encroachment to minimize or mitigate development. So I, I don't know what that means, stormwater maybe. Um, with no like, you know, there's no qualification there. And so like, in my mind, I don't know that we've yet accomplished in our zoning that direction from the existing comp plan, and I would love to see the areas in map seven and eight um, as an overlay also on the future land use map to see what areas, you know, are yet to be protected, that, that we said when we, in our existing comp plan, we're going to protect that are unprotected.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew, and that's something that I was trying to get in this information is my thought with these maps, and, and, and thank you for suggesting those two maps from the previous comp plan, is to basically layer up information and find out where things intersect and find out like, if we look at where existing water lines, existing transit lines, good access to parks, um, where, where those things all intersect, maybe that's somewhere that you do want to include as a higher intensity how, like residential housing area or something like that. So it's, it's taking pieces of information and stacking them up, and maybe you'll find something that you didn't expect to see that like, oh, like this is actually a prime area for commercial use or mixed use or, you know, high intensity use of whatever kind or, or some other type of categorization. And, and really, really developing the future land use map as as analysis of every piece, of all the pieces of information that you think are relevant to it. Um, so it's to Ted's point, the future land use map is sort of the summary map of everything. Where then for the details of all these other things, you can look at all the other maps, but all these other pieces of information should feed into the decision-making to where different categories of future land use end up. So using map seven and eight from the previous comp plan or the equivalent um, data input, you know, layering that on top of already conserved lands or currently unbuilt areas and, and maybe making the, where those three things overlap is dark green or whatever it might be.
Is that it, Andrew? Um, Duncan?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, this was right about the time I came on the commission. I remember talking briefly about the map. I think it had pretty much already been not quite fi- almost finalized, but I, I remember, I think it was Art was talking about it as kind of a.
Not quite fi- almost finalized, but I I remember, I think it was Art was talking about it as kind of an aspirational document. Um it's not a hard zoning map like, you know, you shall not build in the yellow area or something like that, but um. That's the way I look at it, but when I looked at the stuff that you had asked, what would be helpful um? I think it would be helpful to have some more knowns, you know, is there some some facts that we could add that could. You know, could make the map a little more accurate. Um I I do like it being fuzzy because I think I view it as more of an aspirational document. It's not a hard. Okay, you've got to do this here, this there. But yeah, I I agree, you know, I mean. We've got the habitat blocks now, that's a change. Um there's some other changes that have been made. So if there's any information there. That we could glean that could give us a little more accuracy, um I think that would be helpful, but I I do like the fuzzy map. I think it's. You know, it's it's sort of the ten thousand foot picture of what you what what would we like the city to do?
Were there any pieces of information that came to mind, facts that you would like to know?
I think, you know, obviously, I think Andrew might have mentioned, you know, the habitat blocks, uh those we know those are conserved. At any land that we know is conserved, I think it would be helpful to call that out. Um the other and the other question I had, and I can't remember if it was talked about way back in two thousand sixteen. Would would it make sense to segment out the airport? I mean, that that's kind of an entity all onto its own. It seems kind of strange to 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 lump that together with, you know, a big chunk of our industrial open space when it's really. It's a totally different use in my mind.
Yeah, um in my gut reaction to that is that, yes, there is the airport itself and the National Guard facilities and things that are specifically airport. You know, runways, the terminal, et cetera. But there are so many, there are also so many auxiliary businesses that are around there that like say. Um you know, the helicopter company in Mansfield, that that I think that's their name. They. Serve the airport, but they're a private business. So what side of that line? Maybe would you draw that sort of or or beta, for example? Um beta is specifically relies on the airport for because it's airplanes. Um but it's a private business instead of being part of the airport, so. Just I'm just asking for your gut, would you draw a line around the airport?
Thinking of the the airport area itself on it's, you know, not necessarily the exact.
Okay.
Boundary, but just sort of uh its own entity.
Airport and airport related.
Well, maybe that's where the fuzziness comes in, whereas the fuzz is right over that that line where the beta parking lot couldn't be. Because you can't get there unless you're secret agents and then um you know, like the like at the line between the. What might be a business that the public could get into pretty easily versus the. It because it it does, it's kind of disingenuous, like it's not like a like a business could get put in there, so it's.
Also land that we don't really control the future of. I mean, that's not under our purview.
The nine hundred odd acres um uh belongs to another municipality.
I I I think I agree with you, Mike. I just thought calling that out somehow might be.
Yeah, I I think def- um defining the that property that belongs to the 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 city of Burlington. I think it's some nine hundred acres, right?
I'm not sure what to.
Something like that. It would be make it less fuzzy. Because then you've got south of that, you've got the 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 industrial parks, um technology park and. Um. What's the other one?
Meadowlands?
South of uh Meadowlands.
Like the two, oh yeah.
Which. Could also be defined because they are. I mean, their boundaries are. So I I I think they could be less fuzzy.
Paul, did you have anything or are you in a?
I just wondered if the hill farm is in blue here.
Um part of it.
Mixture.
Yes, the hill farm is blue, orange, yellow, and green. I believe.
And it runs low distance to high intensity, uh west to east.
And that's on the comprehensive plan map from twenty sixteen, right?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Um I guess two things jumped out at me. One is that um. I think, and I don't know how we would identify this, but I under the information needs, you you say current parks and access. Um I know this is a point that Ted's brought up a bunch, like how do we make sure that we don't have areas of the city that are parkless? Like, like, is there a way to do some kind of like um proximity map around parks? To just make sure we're not missing an area? Because I feel like if we're only overlying things that are in existence, we might miss the things we're missing. And parks just jumped out is the one thing. There might be something else like that.
I believe that the open space plan developed in twenty sixteen, right around the same time of the complan. Did do an analysis of distance of homes to parks, so we can pull that information, I think is a great um a great point. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then um and I don't know how to solve this, and I think this might be for like a future conversation once we have everything, but. You know, in so many areas, we've moved a little bit more away from use and more about how people interact with things more towards form. And. Um you know, I think you get at this in your notes too, that you know, this shorthand here and the colors. It's just it it's sometimes hard to like picture.
Yeah, um yeah, that's something from I was clearly not involved in the twenty sixteen plan, so I'm coming at these maps of sort of. An almost an outsider perspective, I mean truly an outsider perspective. And that is something that I Paul and I actually had a conversation about is like, wha- what is that, what actually? Is allowed and would be allowed in these areas? What would be consistent zoning with some of these areas? Um and there are definitions in other parts of the complan um for, you know, principally residential and and those things. Um but it is a question about what what categories do you even want to use? Like, are residential, non-residential and mixed use useful categories? Or are we moving towards so much being more being mixed use that you don't really have as much of the two ends of the spectrum? Or is it truly a spectrum so that having three categories doesn't make a lot of sense? Um or and then the other side is the intensity of use side. It goes from very low to higher density. Or in intensity, not density, intensity of use. Is that something that's useful? Does that go towards, you know, walkability or um bikeability? Um core services, anything like that, or or is there a better way? To categorize how you want future land use to go?
Yeah, I mean, I think the big thing for you for.
Sorry, I can't do this when I've broken her apparently.
Well, um. Sorry, go ahead, Michael. To just to maybe answer some of those questions that Kelsey raised. I mean, Ted suggested. That we might have this. Fuzzy, maybe a bit less fuzzy map, but then drill down and behind it more detailed maps, a map of all the parks. Or a map of all the um habitat blocks, I mean separately, but they must be. Legally defined as part and parcel of this future land uh future land use map. Can be page one, that's that one, and page two could be very detailed of where the habitat blocks are. Um and page three could be very detailed of where all N R P zones are. Or another one could be parks, uh if you wanted to get down into the into the detail, but they really need to be. Uh need to be used as part of this official. Future land use map.
That that's exactly right, Michael. So there's statutorily, you have to have a map showing natural resources, community facilities, transportation and. Future land use map. And I think, you know, when I look at this map, the the key thing to me is this is the. Along with the one page goals and and vision that you put to together, this is. Uh for lack of a better word, the primary marketing material as to what the what the. Hundred and fifty or two hundred pages of the comprehensive plan says in one page, because whenever we go out to do a presentation. We get to have, you know, two slides about the complan. One is the vision and goals and one is a map. So what what do you want the one map to say? And I think, for example, Kelsey and I were talking about this map to her point, and she said. Low intensity principal residential, does that jive with some of the conversations the commission's been having about having a neighborhood store? And I said, well, it's in the definition, but the very fact that you asked the question raises it raises that to me. So we could, for instance, we had a discussion saying we can call some areas neighborhood areas. We don't have to use technical terms like intensity. This is your map to say to say what you want about the future of the community. And you can call them, you know.
I would, I would suggest that having that level of detail available as a backup to this map will help you. In planning and zoning, because it'll be more clearly defined and less less fuzzy. Um for example, um one of our other maps had five hundred year floodplains uh in it and habitat blocks. We've got those uh in in our new uh L D Rs. Um but those kinds of things need to be shown, I think, because uh the land use of a five hundred year floodplain. Is a hell of a lot different. To some other land.
Right, so the intent would be, let's say, we use the hundred year, five hundred year floodplain. The intent, if you chose to keep something like this, would be that that's entirely in the green. And then if and then if one of the other maps shows that it's the detail of it. Um I would advocate that keeping this to four, five, six colors so that the general public can just see big picture. Neighborhood, high intensity area, conserved, what's the city's big goal?
So I.
I'm paying attention. I got it, Andrew.
So um just to echo some, I mean, I like the word neighborhood rather residential does imply a little more. You know, intensity or I can see density, but a a question is, um do we have example? I mean, I I think this is pretty good. I'm also not all in favor of tweaking. I really, I really think it does. Do a pretty good job of bringing all the elements together. It could be tweaked, but I I'm not sure necessarily it needs to be. But do we have examples of other towns that we could leverage off of and see if there if they have, if someone designed a better mousetrap? Um.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to do that.
I mean, maybe that would be a good, a good thing to see.
And I mean, Kelsey, were you were you and Paul thinking that, um you know, I'm just kind of like looking back at the other maps? That are gonna also need to be updated, like, like, what's the order here? Like, do we get the build out analysis? Updated and then that's one of our overlays and then we get the water sewer map updated. And then, you know, if we need these maps anyway, um. You know. Like, what's the order? Do we get these maps and then use them to like update this one?
That's what I would say.
Andrew was saying if if the general like visualness of it seems appropriate, then. Then maybe we need these backup maps first and then.
Right, yeah, I would agree with that, that that the backup maps are sort of the layers that you're stacking. Like, I think of it like from elementary school and you have the the clear plastic and you drew a smiley face and then another piece of clear plastic and that sunglasses. And then you had another piece of clear plastic with a beard on it and you'd stack them all up and there's a guy with a beard and sunglasses. Um this is the beard and sunglasses guy. The sunglasses is a sewer line. The the underlying map is the streets and the the beard is the habitat blocks and you're stacking those things up and you get the big picture of the city in a snapshot. Um but maybe you smudged it a little because you're making it a little bit fuzzy where the beard maybe is or isn't.
Well, I would I would just add one quick thing to that, which is that layering all those pieces will also let you identify where do you need to make a policy decision. So you may have a map that shows transit and and infrastructure. And that's pretty clear that that might line up with the red, but then you might see that we have waterline, sewer line and also a habitat block in one area. And this is the map that ultimately should be saying. Um what is the city's policy choice? You've got water and sewer capacity and also natural resources in an area. What's the land use policy of the future for the city?
Right.
Layering those things together lets this map make that decision. And I think, Andrew, you pointed out the last plan, there is a little bit of conflict in there that is not. Um thoroughly resolved, a objective of mine would be, it should be very clear in this plan. The resolution of important issues like that.
Yep.
Oh, Ted? And then.
Um you know, the section where you say um city also can compile. There also has in some form additional information about development. I think it'd be really helpful for. For me to, you know, over the years, we you see development and then we get complaints that we're not business friendly and. I'd like I'd like to get a sort of assessment of where we are with building and what's in the hopper. And what potentially um can be built? Um you know, can in this X Y Z area, I'm thinking of, you know, Larkins North forty, south of Butler Farms or or. Yeah, Butler Farms, it's a big chunk of land. And uh that eventually will likely be developed in some form, but how many, you know, units are are within our. So we could sort of assess and say, well, you know, we have over the next several years, X number of units that are likely to be built. And right now there are X number of units in the hopper permitted, uh you know, in the permit process. Just an overall, it seems like, you know, we see suddenly a development pops up and then I didn't realize that was. You know, someone asked, oh, I didn't realize there's going to be a development there.
Ted, that's making me think that there's maybe three inputs here. One is what exists, which is fairly straightforward.
Right.
One is what has been approved and will be coming in the future regardless of any policy choices the city makes. Like cider mill two is fully approved, it doesn't exist, but it will, it will exist.
Right.
And then uh what does the future? Um wh- what's potential for the future so that you can make policy choices on that?
Right.
Yep. Um very helpful. Yep. Um I see this big blue and. At what point will we discuss a little bit more housing in commercial areas along the along this in the complan? At what point would we be talking about that?
Sure, so I um sent the uh just relatedly, I sent the request about the temporary employee housing. On logic related question to the staff liaison for the Economic Development Committee. Um I haven't heard back from her, but I'll follow up with her tomorrow. Um that will be on their sort of upcoming discussion points for that shorter term question. And then the longer term question um will go to them as well and can be discussed here alongside, but that is sort of in the. March, my guess would be sort of a little bit later February.
And I think if that's a question that you're all interested in, we can relay that to not just economic development, but affordable housing for what are their opinions on that? So that you can be pulling in feedback on that. So so as you get ideas that you say, here's a thing that I'd like to. See us think about more over the next six months, let us know so that we can relay those to other committees too.
Well, I am in the context of not competing with commercial, but as an ancillary uh pop uh option. So in other words, not suddenly saying that Meadowlands will be all land, will be all housing, but if it's a. Business uh office space like the building I'm I own is it'd be nice maybe to have two or three stories of housing. So but not on a factory, you're not suggesting that, so.
Just a question for Paul. Um you kind of prefaced this discussion by saying that. Um there are organizations that are not pleased with the fuzzy map, right?
Uh we're an outlier in using a fuzzy map, yeah.
Yeah, so I just wondered if there was any value in just conforming, you know, that everybody speaks the same language kind of thing.
Paul, I can't believe that you're the person at the table who's who's advocating conforming.
Had a complete revelation.
Metamorphosis over here.
Completely changed entirely.
Oh, I ain't sure today either. I know we're all wearing gray, it seems like. And no, oh, we got some color down there. You all.
All right, yes, pink.
Pastels from here on out. Um so so Paul, I don't have a problem with going with a more clear map. If you're comfortable, as I was saying to to Ted a minute ago, if you're comfortable that this largely. You know, that that you feel really good that these are the conserved areas. I'm not talking about like a one acre wetland, but you know, thing. But larger areas and these are the areas that you want to see neighborhoods. That's perfectly fine. I think that's just, you know, where is your level of of comfort, knowing that that is, that's the plan for the next eight years?
Yeah.
Michael, you've.
Yeah, um as maybe as a first step, I mean, uh Kelsey's listed these nine bullet points, but. Perhaps as a a useful exercise for us to overlay. What's in maps seven and eight with map on? what's in maps seven and eight with map on map eleven and see what have we, what have we missed? And what have we got that we don't, that we shouldn't have? Um, because that's kind of, I think Andrew alluded to the fact that there's a mismatch between these three maps. Um, and it might be helpful to, to overlay them and see what have we got? I mean, we might have more than nine categories. We might have fifteen for all I know and then we'll know where to go. Which ones are important and which ones are not? And you know, Ted's say, where, where should we develop and where, where shouldn't we? Uh, we have to take into account what's in Article twelve as well.
So I did.
Does that, does that make sense? I mean, do you understand why I'm saying that?
So I listed one of the bullet points and I don't remember which one. I don't have it in front of me, but um consistency with current zoning is, was one of the, the current zoning map. That would be one aspect of what you're talking about, like there are, because of zoning changes during IZ, including Article twelve, there are areas now in the this fuzzy map that are not consistent with, with what we now have for zoning. Um, so there's sort of that side of it, but also so that would be something to look at and see if you want to correct. And you could correct either one. You could correct the zoning map or the future land use map. But also to recognize that the future land use map is not necessarily a summary of current zoning. Um, it like the conservation areas, Article twelve is one thing, but you, I, what I would caution against is saying, oh, we currently have a C one R fifteen on this piece of property, so it has to be red. Um, just as an example. That may not be what you want it to be in the future. Um, so we want this map to represent future, moving forward and the future moving forward and not necessarily just a summary.
Not a zoning map, it's a use map.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, certain types of zoning have to appear as in one of these colors.
So, so Michael, I think, um, I think we agree that adding in the natural resources as a development component would be really helpful as a, as a building component of this map would be really useful. One very technical thing, um, the, what we learned shortly after twenty sixteen is that the state, the layers that went into that map seven and eight get updated from time to time by the state, you know, as newer wetlands are identified, et cetera. We would like to bring to you, if you're comfortable with it, the latest and greatest versions of that information from the data sources rather than a static from ten years ago, if that's okay. Um, we can identify where there's been changes also, but generally speaking, using the newest um information available would be a recommendation.
And we have a, a prime example at the uh, near the, near the Wheeler Park. There was a class three wetland, which in the last couple of years became a class two wetland.
Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just, I, I, I wanted to advocate for um keeping it simple. I mean, I think we could, we could put ten thousand layers in this map, but to me, again, it goes back to what is it? It's really an aspirational document about what we would like to see. Um, and we can certainly dial down and say, okay, if these are the categories or the colors we're gonna use, let's make sure we have accuracy behind those colors. But I, I want to caution against getting too, I mean, too detailed, not, not detailed, but going overboard on it.
Yeah. Yeah. So it seems like, you know, um, uh, Paul, go ahead.
It's an aspirational document with legal consequences to it, so it's not just as simple as aspirational.
Well, I like, I like kind of the, the way this conversation has been going to get updated, kind of new information for these other maps that are in here. You know, it sounds like we've added a few other things, but basically updating the maps that are in there, Kelsey's bullet points and then kind of using them to see where, you know, maybe, you know, obviously like the green needs to be expanded where we have a habitat block. You know, that's kind of a really obvious example. Um, and then, you know, maybe once we have that, then we can see how comfortable we are and if we want to stay with fuzzy. Like some people have suggested, or you know, maybe if we're so comfortable, we want, we could make those lines more um, solid, solid change between colors. Um, but so I think as long as we've kind of suggested the things, like the input data we want to see as, you know, to get to that meeting where we have that discussion, then I think that would be what we need for tonight.
Yeah, I guess what I was curious about is I, I made this list just, these are things that I would be interested to see. Um, if I were in your position to make these kinds of decisions, but I'm just, just one person with one brain. Well, but I need this, you know, seven more brains to be putting in this information. Um, so I didn't know if anyone had a chance to think about, are there other pieces of information that are not necessarily reflected in either this list or the maps from the previous comprehensive plan or are changes that went came through IZ like the habitat blocks? Um, that you would be interested in seeing, not necessarily would be, you know, black and white decision makers for where density or intensity or use might be. But is there anything else that you thought of that you would real, you would like to see if we could, we could obtain as a, as a data input?
Well, I mean, just to be crystal clear, like when you say habitat blocks, presumably you mean any areas that are kind of conserve the, the buffers and RP, right? All that would be green.
So that would be a decision that you, you would all would be making about whether, what color it would be, but we could provide the background data.
Area says, I said, whatever the green label is.
Well, I think what Kelsey is saying is as an information, in order for you to make the decision of whether to uh draw it as primarily conservation or not, what do you need? And I think what you're saying is show the broadest version of the natural resources so that you can make the decision about whether that is where you'd want to draw the lines in this future map. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would have thought that to the extent the regs say an area is conserved today, whether it's because it's a, it's a wetland or stream buffer or habitat block or NRP or whatever, that we'd see that in the first instance as, as green and decide whether we want to continue that, I would imagine we would. Um, and then, as I was saying before, I would also like to see, um, perhaps updated with state information, the areas in maps seven and eight that where the existing plan aspires to protect, that, that are not protected to make a determination about those areas, particularly where there may, there may be some conflict in the existing plan.
Do you, I guess, I guess one question just to follow up on that, um, to, I mean, one thing that seems like, like a real change since this two thousand sixteen is the green areas, you know, we do have expanded regulations for multiple things that I think would fall into the green, the, with our chapter twelve and um, I guess I wonder if that's something that we would kind of just ask to have updated on here as a just initial step so we could see that. Um, you know, I know some of these other things we might want as maybe a separate map or an overlay, but that feels like kind of a little bit of a no brainer to me that it's a change that we've actually made recently.
Right. Similarly, there's been some land that has been conserved permanently regardless of regulation that would in, in the decision's been made. Um, you know, the Ockler Farm having been conserved, that would naturally go green, for example.
And, and there's more to come. Um, we would then change, maybe change the name of that category not to very low intensity principally open space, but it would be conserved land or something like that. The, the, and then, um.
Well, I guess that, you know, that becomes a question for you because if, you know, words as a future land use, do you want to say conserved in all instances or you know, might it choose to be more broad for, you know, Red Rocks Park is included in there and it is certainly a, a, a natural area, but it is not entirely intended to be natural, right? There's, there's a beach house, there's things like that. So, so those, that can be a later decision for you.
And a lot of that land doesn't have any conservation easement on them, so legally they could change in the future. But I've always had a difficulty with um the fact that it's sometimes called um aspirational. I mean, uh, our land development, land use regulations are supposed to comply with the, the comprehensive plan. So I don't see how it can be aspirational. I mean, this is this, this comprehensive plan is supposed to guide us in, in our planning and uh so, so I think it should be clear that it's, it isn't aspirational. It's, it's something that we have to follow.
Well, Paul, did you want to respond to that? Okay, then I will. I guess, I guess when I think of aspirational, like I think of the opposite, like of conservation, like the red, like the red zone. There might be someone who owns a forested parcel in the red zone. We're not forcing them to build at medium to higher intensity. So there's a little bit of, um.
But they may if they wish to.
They may if they wish to. So it's kind of like the aspirational vision of like if you, you know, because we don't have complete control over what people will do, but we do have control over what we can guide them to do. Is that maybe the?
Yeah, my, I, I've been thinking about sort of a similar question and where I've sort of landed is something like a directed evolution, like we're trying to funnel development or not development or use or whatever, however you want to categorize it in particular directions for certain areas. Um, this map doesn't tell anyone what they have to do. It's a guidance document for the, this commission and future commissions in the next eight to ten years about how to look at zoning changes or um other regulatory changes or, or programmatic, non-regulatory changes or, or things to direct the city towards this sort of evolution and into the future. That's how I've been thinking of it.
Well, I like Jessica's suggestion as a, as a first step to um put on this map or a map. Um, what's, what will be, might be green in the future, habitat blocks, wetlands and their buffers, uh, NRP. Um, um, I had another.
Floodplains.
Floodplains, um, that would sort of give us a good sense of where we are with, with what's with, with uh land that's, that we, we expect won't be used for anything perhaps other than agriculture or, or recreation.
Or, or I guess I'd just like to add that, like NRP, you know, there's, they could maybe have three houses. You know, it, it feels like it would still be maybe in the green category, even though we know there could be the three houses, just to, Andrew.
So I think my observation kind of Washington's commission operated over the past number of years is that the, the comp plan really does serve a, a function and sort of function well as an aspirational document, because most of the arguments that people made was, were grounded in the comp plan. And the place that there were division and debate and different viewpoints was because the complaint was inconsistent. And people pulled out this part of the complaint, this part of argument and pulled out this part. But if we, you know, work toward, you know, as best we can, um, removing those ambiguities, I think it really will serve then as a document to guide planning, right? Because it, it's a cohesive framework. So I, I think it serves that purpose and the, it, from what I've observed, the, the places where it hasn't served that purpose i- is when there've been inconsistencies and ambiguities.
So I guess I'm just circling back to the same question. A lot of the discussion has been about um environmental protection, natural resources, conserved lands, things like that. And also the flip side, the housing development. Is there anything else that people have, any other pieces of information that, that people feel would be important to include in this kind of conversation instead of out, outside of what's already been listed? Th- I'm just, things that I considered and then didn't list are, you know, location of small, you know, businesses with under ten employees. Um, location of uh the, the, the large educational institutions or medical institutions um that pull employee from a larger distance. Um, the schools and access routes to the schools, um, current access routes to the schools. Um, there's, there's a lot of pieces of information that are not strictly in sort of development or non-development that I think are interesting to include in this kind of conversation moving forward. And I didn't know if, if anyone had thought of anything else that they would like to, not, no pressure, like if, if that's.
And we'll be bringing ideas of our own as well to this. For example, one that, that I'll suggest is identifying what our immediate neighboring areas are doing so that you can look to see, you know, what's the transition?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, is Williston's policy to be consistent or a hundred percent the opposite? You can make whatever choice you make, but to understand these things, but yeah, so.
Um, one thing you just mentioned, Kelsey, and I actually don't know if this data exists, but um like an employment heat map, like, and like I said, I don't know that that's a thing that exists. But you know, it's, it's an interesting concept, like if we know that these are the areas of the city that have a lot of people working there, maybe those are also areas of the city where we might want to consider um, making sure there's housing for those people as well. So I don't, yeah, it's.
I would answer, but it looks like Paul is looking on something. Um, I would say yes.
Would be possible.
At, at a minimum, there are proxy data sets that you can approximate some of that information. Um, large, especially with, you know, knowing the approximate employees in larger employers. Um, and I'm not sure what Paul's doing, but he may have more to add.
On, on the ground, I mean, after our last meeting or before, I drove around Technology Park and uh Meadowlands and up and down Heinzburg Road that, and there is, there's plenty of land. Certainly, uh, in the Meadowland area and along, along Heinzburg Road, which is, is zoned IO, but could easily be um, housing, employee housing, workforce housing, whatever you want to call it. Um, and that's where the, they work right there. And in, in the case of Technology Park, there's a five or six or seven football fields worth of open field in the middle. Now, the owners might want it that way and all the tenants might want it that way, but that's could also be suitable. So, you know, it's, it's a question, what's for us, what's possible? And uh, and how can we respond to the, the desire for employee housing close to places of employment? There are opportunity for it, but it's requires some pretty courageous zoning changes.
One other piece of data that might be useful, I guess, the, the town's official map, right? If town has a road through an area that is green or yellow, like maybe you, you, I, I actually have never seen those two things overlayed in the town official map. I don't think even the comp plan.
Right, because it's, it's, it's a regulatory document that comes from it, but another thing, another point of consistency, we shouldn't have a planned road where you're planning conservation and vice versa, right?
Show some of those elements on, on this.
Ooh.
So there's an employment heat map for you if you're interested. So this is the kind of thing we can bring in. There's so much information out there. So
cool.
Uh, this is a heat map of um employment according to census data. Um.
Cool.
What, what? That's so cool.
Yeah, so it gets pretty specific pretty quickly.
Pretty neat.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Hmm. So just, uh, you know, I picked one for example, so don't self-limit, I guess, is what I'm saying by showing this map. If you've got an idea of something, we can tell you if we can track it down or not.
Hmm. Or we can give it a shot and see what we come up with.
Move it up so we can see the two big industrial.
What is that little circle in the south part of that map?
Right here.
Yeah.
Probably a strange little data error.
Cider mill and the.
Yeah.
Next.
You know, it's one of those things like, you know, take, take some of this data with a grain of salt. It is possible that it's something like the cider mill or the, or it could be that there is a business that has a tech business that has fifty employees and that is living out of somebody's it's based out of somebody's house and then they've got fifty employees around the country and they're listed as their headquarters being here. So like, you know.
It's a little. Could it be a solar farm?
It shouldn't be because of jobs.
But that, that's where the, um.
Jobs associated with it.
The Cider Mill.
The Cider Mills.
Yeah, but they employ like half a dozen people.
Yeah, and then the, and the owner body shop is actually.
Yeah, but I mean, isn't that dark blue, like fifty people? I mean, what's the?
Right. Uh, that's why I'm saying, I think that it's possible.
Yeah.
Um, gathering data on employment. This um gathering data on employment is tricky because it's often goes to the headquarters of a business. So you could theoretically now have a tech business with, you know, a lot of people and they're run out of somebody's house and every other employee lives somewhere else, so.
Yeah, you're right, it is cider mill, but it seems like it's strange to have a dark blue for a.
Yeah.
Small business.
Okay, well, good to know.
Yeah.
There's businesses across the street.
This seems like this has been a productive conversation. Any other um thoughts before we get data back?
Um, ha- have you um included the uh Chamberlain Neighborhood? Study from twenty sixteen? Or when will we or how does that happen?
In in what way? In this map? In the future land use map or in the comp plan?
In the comp plan.
It will be incorporated into the comp plan um. Likely more in the text than in this map necessarily, but with Paul, yeah.
Go ahead, finish finish your thoughts, cuz I think you're about to say the same thing I was about to say.
I'm not sure I was.
There is a white spot on the current.
Oh.
Uh, future land use map exactly in the Chamberlain Neighborhood. Uh, because in twenty sixteen, when the planning commission was wrapping this up, it was while the Chamberlain Neighborhood. Uh, committee was doing its work and the commission didn't wanna jump ahead of the committee. So one of my professional objectives here is no white spots on the map that say we're not sure what we wanna do. But that one was just a realistic, if the commission didn't feel good of jumping ahead of the committee, cuz they hadn't made their findings yet.
But there is a lot of good information in there that has an a lot of suggestions and proposals that haven't been implemented.
So it is the any other thoughts on this item?
Yeah, great, great start.
Yeah, let's start. Okay, so next on the agenda is other business, which is the Burlington Comprehensive Development Ordinance Amendments. Some of these were actually quite interesting. The um, so I don't know if you felt the same way, Paul.
Yeah, I wanna flag um two of them. One is sort of quasi relevant to us and one is just interesting um. The so the quasi relevant one to us is there is a a clarification taking place in. The south end mixed industrial area, which is the area that includes um Queen City Park Road, formerly Industrial Road. Um, including Burton and they have some language that talks in there now about. Uh, all uses um that. Must total no must total at least fifty one percent of a building. In order for forty nine percent of the building to be a entertainment venue or something like that. It's very convoluted language that they're clarifying to just make it. More clear. It's not a policy change, it's just more clear, but that's been a subject area of a lot of interest. In our community, so I did specifically speak with their planning staff to say, is this a policy change? And they said, no. There are two big policy changes, though. One is um the South End Transit Center, which is by the gas station on Pine Street. Um, there's been a, there's a large parking area there. Um, the city of Burlington is proposing that that be a. Mixed use zone that would allow for a transit center and substantial housing in that area, so that would be the first time that housing is permitted. Lakeside, yes, but on the. East side of the train track, so not in the Lakeview neighborhood, but in that big giant parking lot that's sort of next to the Champlain College Buildings. And Sears Lane. So that's an interesting um big. Um, potential policy change and big target for where they're looking at housing in the future. The other one is. Uh, University of Vermont Trinity Campus to allow for some infill and requirements around um. I guess what we would call civic space in that area, so neither of them right on our borders, but interesting work going on from our neighbors.
Yeah, Paul, do you could you bring up this map? I just thought this was really interesting um. So one of the things that it's um, I don't know, it's towards the end. Um, there was a really interesting map that showed it's a it's above that. The hi- heights, it's one up. Two, two, there it is. So. Like a gradation of heights like around like a central area, so it's one way of doing like a node. Like we had, we have done some designated some nodes along some of our corridors, but this was kind of like a big node. Where there's bigger heights in the middle, the red is like higher heights. It's actually quite tall. And that's like on top of general dynamics and that parking lot. And then it doesn't show it here, which I think is like a little strange. I didn't see it in the text either. I think that that. Uncolored area is where the. I keep calling it the circ. It's not the circ. The Champlain Parkway is gonna come and it like dead ends there.
It's gonna join Lakeside.
Yeah, so that's that's it. So it's really interesting kind of zoning like in. I think response to the fact that that big road is gonna just go right there and and um. I mean, it's in it's there already. You can see it. It's paved already. Um, yeah, so it's it just likes this idea. It's a different. We haven't done a thing exactly like this.
Well, and something to think about, as you know, back to the last conversation, Kelsey noted in the um. In the staff notes that there's nothing in our future land use map that says. Where the priority em- of emphasis should be, so that's something to think about the future. Similarly. Our zoning calls out some nodes, but our future land use map doesn't say, you know, we're trying to create. Areas of activity, that might be something to think about. It doesn't, you know, graphically, you can do whatever you want, but if you wanna do, say, the corner of Fayette and. Felburn Road, say, this is an area of ends of in of of um of emphasis. You could put a star there or something like that. You can just think about how you wanna represent your vision of the future. So.
Yeah, it was just interesting.
Yeah, and interesting to see that how they're layering density there.
Anything else on this item? Um, I had added a short update on that other paper article. Um, request. So a few meetings ago, I had said we had gotten. Um, a request from someone on the Energy Committee um to help occasionally put together. Um, a clean and green feature article for the other paper occasionally, and they've reached out to other committees as well. Um, so I got some more information and they say, here's the guideline, seven hundred and fifty words or less. No acronyms. Ideally, we would like to include graphics of some kind, photos, illustration, graph, chart. Um, no logos and then it would says each article would need a person's name. And what the committee is and a very short bio, like a one sentence about the person. So it's, from what I can tell, we didn't really get. Feedback on um exactly. You know, but I do have a list of the other committees that they've reached out to, which was affordable housing. They were thinking maybe that would be a weatherization article. Bike pedestrian committee, the natural resources conservation committee. Um, parks and rec, they thought maybe a topic would be invasive species, common roots and the South Burlington Land Trust, so. You know, I think that they're, you know, putting together like a. Like a monthly environmental feature that would take turns who did it, so. I think maybe they don't know how often we would have a person do it, but it sounds like it could could be written by any one of us and. It seems like, especially with the comp plan, we probably could come up with a topic or two in the next year that's kind of in that category of. Clean clean and green. Um.
Uh, and are these to go to MJ really?
She uh she would. Yeah, MJ is who um.
Monitor.
Yes, it sounds like MJ would be coordinating.
And is this from like one of us as an individual or from the entire planning commission and be reviewed and like?
So I asked and it the answer by email isn't clear and she did offer to do a phone conversation, but I didn't. Actually talk to her by phone. Um, it sounds like they would want the person's name and the committee, so I mean, we could maybe write that. However, by saying we're a member. Um, I I'm not sure, you know, that's part of why I brought it up as a group, you know, it's. Cuz, you know, unless we're all gonna like write something and then review it at a meeting and vote on it, it wouldn't be from. The whole commission, it'd be from a member of the commission.
That'd be an easy way to do it and we would just probably just say, you know, member of the planning commission, but not on behalf of it.
That's weird.
Unless unless we all better than agreed.
Which which is an option. I think we could choose to say we're interested, but. You know, we want it to be, I mean, we could always put it on an agenda just so people could take a look and make sure there's no glaring errors or.
But well, there could be two things. One, you suggested written by a member of the planning commission, but doesn't represent the planning commission's viewpoint. Or written by Mister X or Miss Miss Y uh of the planning commission. Um, for and on behalf of the planning commission, right? Could go either way.
No.
Paul, two notes. One, um, there's a third one, which is depending on what your purpose of it is, it could be a. Discussion of where the commission is, uh, you know, we are going to be seeking input on the following subjects, so it could be on behalf of the commission. But not necessarily have to be a hundred percent vetted if you do that. I guess the other thing I would note is. The because this is a regular call of it will be perceived as coming from the commission. I think that's an important sort of optic of it. Um, I think it because it's not a letter to the editor, it's not a one off, it is a regular feature that they're seeking committees on, so I just wanna. Give you that thought.
Uh, I would say that if any one of us wrote. One of these articles, uh it should always be agreed by the commission, because it's gonna be seen as coming from the commission, whether we have a disclaimer or not.
Okay, well, I'm I'm comfortable with having someone draft something and having it on an agenda just so we can see it. Is that what you're suggesting?
Or whenever, if any of us write something, it should should be on an agenda and discussed and so, yeah, that's fine or no, we would like to make these changes.
Yeah.
Because as, as I said, it will always be seen as coming from the commission. You know, we're all known as members of the commission and they will, the readers will assume that it's the commission's viewpoint.
Yeah, that nuance of on behalf of or not on behalf of would maybe be lost.
Um, I think it'd be a good idea to use this opportunity to begin to explain to people. That we are writing the comprehensive plan and what the comprehensive plan is. And why they might wanna be involved in the comprehensive plan, that kind of stuff. I mean, it, you know, kind of non controversial, non. You know, uh, issue oriented kind of thing, but just um. An open invitation to people to be involved. And then I'd like to see us, you know, really do that, you know, really bring people into. This and have an article that's not dry, you know, I mean, that's like, you know, that doesn't necessarily call it the comprehensive plan, but you know, more. You know, you can be involved in the future of your city, you know, really.
You know, we had talked about doing some kind of focused topic area. Um, like panel discussions maybe as part of the outreach, like I wonder if. This could be an opportunity to like highlight maybe one of those that's kind of more more in the category of clean and green and then. Maybe we split it up where each of us writes one and like, you know, we would kind of highlight some of those other discussions too, or maybe have a highlight. Before that meeting happens to s- to maybe get an article out about a topic and then say there's this upcoming. Panel discussion. I I don't know, just maybe a.
Also, don't feel restricted that this is the only way that you can ever participate in the other paper. This is something that MJ reels from the. Energy Committee has put together. It's a wonderful thing. We can also communicate with the other paper to say. Comp Plan twenty twenty four, we would love to have four articles that, you know, or four. You know, opportunities to share along the four major themes uh to. Ex- and and work in partnership with the other paper. There's nothing wrong with also doing that, and I'd be happy to reach out to them.
Would really help with public engagement.
There there are so many things we can write about. I mean, if the TDR thing gets passed, the public has no idea how TDAs work. And they're really powerful. What?
They don't even know what they are.
No, no, I'm just saying, I mean, you can write a nice article about the changes and why those are important from respective of conservation. You can write something about the. Testa Zone, you explain that to the public a bit. I mean, there's there's lots of things that potentially hard to talk about that would help the public understand what we're doing.
I like Paul's idea of, you know, at least doing one for each of the categories of the vision and goal categories throughout the year.
Yeah.
So it sounds like this isn't, maybe it's not a one person writes one article and we're done, but maybe we can. Split up some topics over time.
Okay, on a related note, just FYI, I wrote a piece for this um clean and green. Um, that will be published in next week's other paper about the adoption of the Climate Action Plan.
Oh, nice job. Okay, well, I'll reply that we'll do it and then we can talk later about who writes what.
You didn't have it.
Reasonable. It's I'm.
I think you say it was on behalf of the planning.
I'm hearing no objection to that. Okay, I will say we'll do it. Um, uh, anything else?
One last thing.
You have any minutes to approve?
No, we don't have minutes. Yeah, one last thing, I admit, I wanna clarify, I may have mentioned about, I'd like to put several stories. On a building that I own, but I want to clarify, it's not in South Burlington, so I don't have a conflict of interest if I are pushing. Uh, housing in commercial.
I'll be reflected in the minutes, Ted. That'll be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, um, we're adjourned.
Awesome.
Great.